At Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:35. Do you notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendings are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I'll do a roll call of members present. Mr. Fenske maker.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferrera.
Yeah.
Ms. Rimos Garbiardi.
Here.
Mr. Machado.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Ms. Solomon.
Yeah.
Ms. Abby O'Brien.
Yeah.
And the chair is present. Also with us this evening, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our director of business and finance, Mr. Ronald Taro, our director of curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskel, our principal, Dr. Susan Ralston, and our recording secretary, Ms. Robin MacCarroll. I'll ask that we all stand for the pleasure of the evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask that everyone remain standing, please. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Robert Souza. Mr. Souza was a history teacher, a star baseball player, the founder and head coach of our ice hockey program, an assistant baseball and football coach at Somerset High School. Please a moment of silence. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, February 50 at 6:30 p.m. here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. The first item on the agenda this evening under student teaching and learning, we have our Raider Visionaries of the Month to recognize. For the month of November, we'd like to recognize Karis Potello, Brazilian, Nana Di Stefano, academic, Ava Casey, independent, Aiden Rogers, independent, Erin Almeida, digital citizen, Ava Lorenson, digital citizen, David Bonzow, empathetic, Rachel Wuen, empathetic, Maggie Frye, respectful. Congratulations to those students. And for our December Raider Visionaries of the Month, we'd like to recognize Ian De Souza, empathetic, Grace Peata, empathetic, Roger Lomax, Brazilian, Ava McDermott, independent, Anthony Melo, respectful, Eric Luett, digital citizen, Aiden Pierce, academic, Ryan Rose, digital citizen, and Michael St. Martin, respectful. Congratulations to those students as well. Good work. The next item on the agenda is our Massachusetts STEM Technical Academy grant, and our superintendent is going to give us information about that.
Okay, thank you. I informed the school committee several months ago that we applied for this grant with Bristol Community College, along with several other area high schools, Westport, Durfee, and Atalanta. And Bristol Community College found out in mid-December that they were one of five recipients in the state of a million dollar grant. This grant is going to help us create, with Bristol Community College, a five-year high school degree, associate's degree program in bioscience. Students will enroll in portions here, while at the same time earning credit at Bristol Community College. Then the idea would be for them to take a fifth year after they graduate from here at PCC, taking additional courses in biology, and then after that fifth year from their start of high school, they would have an associate's degree in biology. The structure of this is actually very similar to what we've already created here with our Innovation Pathways program, with that college, that high school-college connection, big emphasis on career exploration. There's an internship component that would take place in that fifth year. Bristol Community College has secured different workplace partners in addition to the schools that we'll work with, so that kids would have annual opportunities for those internship and that career exploration component. The next step, we haven't had a meeting since this was announced, so I'll have more details to share with the committee in the future. But at this point, the next step is to develop some articulation agreements for some of the courses that we can run here while earning 100 level credit at Bristol. So it's a really nice step as we continue to build and expand our early college program offerings for students. I believe we share with you the actual proposal that Bristol Community College submitted to the state.
Ms. Fenske, anyone on the committee, do you have any questions or comments? No questions, great. Well, first, congratulations. And I saw in the proposal that there is a grant that's awarded for this. Is it for planning? Does that grant only go to Bristol Community College?
That's the thing, we have to figure out exactly what the details of that. So of the 1 million, there was a significant portion for planning, that implementation, there's going to be some equipment that they need to purchase to help create some of these courses for our students as well. And I fail to say that this is a no-cost program for students. So that's obviously another aspect of it. Transportation is always an obstacle for early college programs, which is why one of the goals is to create these courses at the high school, so that we eliminate that obstacle for kids. But there is a component where we also want students to learn on the campus, so I'm sure that transportation's going to be part of that. But like I said, they have a, Bristol Community College has been dealing with some other technology issues and things, almost ever since this grant was announced, they have some change over and some personnel as well. So once they're ready or controlled, we need a learning of these.
Ms. Fenske, I have a question, we may not know this yet, but do you know, I mentioned the Innovation Pathways, do you know if students who are in Innovation Pathways would be eligible to participate in this type of early college experience as well, or would they consider two distinct programs?
I'll defer to Ms. Haskel if she wants to jump in. That is something that we don't necessarily know yet, but because they're so similar, I can't see why students who are considered in the Innovation Pathway can't also participate in this. And likewise, Project Lead the Way classes, my hope is that that is one of those, some of the articulation agreements that we get for those Project Lead the Way courses, which fit perfectly with this already. And Project Lead the Way is also a significant component of the Innovation Pathway. What does that look like to you?
Everything that Mr. Schoonover said, I agree with. I mean, the outcome that we're looking for is to get kids involved in these programs and obtain the courses. So as long as it's within the parameters of the grant, this is what we will continue to encourage in the program to grow. So all those higher level courses, we want kids to be in college, career, and life for you. Sometimes DCE allows students to only be quoted or block them, so we obviously are not in that position. We want to go in that place and go after the grant.
Wonderful, thank you. Keep this updated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the February ski trip to Smuggler's Notch. Yes, I, Coach Bradus.
How's everybody doing tonight? So yeah, I'm here to get approval for the annual Smuggler's Notch ski trip. We're running it February 30th, we leave next Friday morning, about 5:00 a.m. So we ski, we get up there, we ski Friday, we ski Saturday, we ski Sunday, come back home usually around 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. So I have a kind of our agenda, a justification, our rationale. Ski trips and events have been a part of local schools for decades, beneficial to students in a variety of ways. It also brings, often brings together students from varied and different backgrounds, creates new friendships, and increases interaction between students and teachers. It also engages the students' bodily kinesthetic learning style, challenges students to think while moving, and also helps lift their confidence to overcome obstacles and find success. Successfully navigating a challenge run leads to relation and positive self-awareness. Ski trips also set students on new positive learning journeys and create new passion hobby that can last for a lifetime. My first time skiing, I was a freshman in high school, got bit by the bug, and I've been doing it ever since. So the trip is 100% student-funded and no money from the school system in terms of so I'm here to seek approval. It's been a couple years before COVID, all excited to go, getting really excited. I did hear about, unfortunately, the tragedies that occurred last weekend, I believe there was a couple of kids dying on the mountain. And when we have our meetings, the first thing I tell these kids is it's about being safe and not skiing or snowboarding above your level. Always ski with a partner, a friend, don't go by yourself. These kids all have my cell phone number, if something, if an emergency that occurs, they can contact me. And fortunately, we've been to the hospital once, I've been doing this trip for about 17 years, and a girl had a slight concussion. So we do have a site, make sure we're being safe.
Ms. Fenske, do you want to add anything?
No.
Is there any question? Can you comment?
I just had one other question. What's the ratios of, do you have chaperones or?
Yeah, so for the condos that we get are right on the slope, and they sleep 12, and so we have one chaperone per condo, so there's 11 kids in a chaperone condo.
So they're kind of following each other's?
Yeah, so they're, we have check-ins in the morning, check-ins in the afternoon, check-ins for bed, all that, so it's, yeah, again, it's surprising enough, the kids usually want to hang out with us too, so it's not bad.
You have good snow out there?
Hope so. Not over.
I was privileged to chaperone this, and yeah, it was surprising, the kids wanted to stay in the condo. Sometimes they made their own food, they didn't even want to go to eat. But I just wanted to comment on what I saw as far as students from different groups really engaging with each other, and that really impressed me right from the beginning. So I did see value in that. I just wanted to ask for three, we already have approval, in a sense, from Dr. Ralston for the trip. And how many students do you have?
Fifty, we're about full. I think we're a full bus, it was a waiting list, hoping to run another trip in March.
Do you have any other questions?
I want to, 50 plus five chaperones or?
Yeah, four chaperones, four chaperones right now, so yeah, the bus is full.
There are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the ski trip to Smuggler's Notch, February 3rd through February 5th, 2023. So, a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Opposed? Next on our agenda is the report of our student representative, Abby O'Brien.
First, I'd like to apologize for not being there last meeting, I was not feeling my best, but I'm good to go now. So today officially marks the end of the second quarter of this school year, which means two really important things. We just finished up with our mid-years, and students are going to begin scheduling classes for next year. So as far as mid-years go, this is the first mid-year for a lot of Somerset Berkeley students. I'm a current senior, so my grade is the only grade that is actually experienced in mid-year in their high school career, because we haven't had them since COVID. And it was very stressful for a lot of kids, I can imagine myself included. The tests, both our mid-years and finals, are worth 6% of our final grade at the end of the year. But I really do think these tests are great preparation for things like AP exams, if kids are taking those in the spring, as well as just in college, any type of midterm or final that you're going to have to take. So while they were very stressful, I do find them to be very beneficial to see what you've learned. And I'm sure students really appreciate the 7:40 start time instead of 7:25, that's the intention of sleep. As far as scheduling goes, students will begin picking classes for next year, starting in the next few weeks. Personally, I don't want to be picking classes, but speaking from experience, I think that a lot of students find when you're picking classes, it's very focused on the next year ahead. So I myself, when I was a freshman, scheduled basically for myself my entire high school career, because I wanted to know what classes I was picking for each year and where that would lead me to them up until my senior year. But I know a lot of kids aren't doing that. So I think it's really important when kids are picking classes that they kind of took a holistic view of what they're doing. And I know that a lot of these kids are going to be meeting with their guidance counselors in the next few weeks. But I really do think that it's important that instead of just looking at, okay, what classes are you taking next year, we start to think about, okay, if you take these classes next year, what are the implications for the year after that, and even the year after that, and what kind of pathways does that open up for you? Because the high school truly does have so many different pathways, depending on what class you take one year versus the next year, and how that can kind of impact your last few years. And I also think that it would be really important to highlight the other options that occur outside of the classroom, such as virtual high school and dual enrollment. I know a lot of ambitious students that don't realize that these programs are kind of available to them. I myself included, I took a virtual AP class for the first time this year that I didn't even know was available to me until this year, when my guidance counselor mentioned it last year. So I think that that's also important, that we place a lot more emphasis on kind of the outside opportunities that students have outside of the school system, because they're really, really great opportunities. I just want to touch upon this briefly, I know that it's on your agenda, but as far as the football game Thanksgiving, from a student's perspective, a lot of us are really upset about it. It's a great tradition, but we understand that it's kind of gotten to the point where it's out of our control. And if that's true, we don't want to see the case rally go. So I know Dr. Ralston mentioned creating some sort of committee where we look to kind of find a way to reimagine our rally in a way that we still keep it, but I think that that's really important to a lot of the students' body, because the rally is one of students' favorite days of the year, it brings the whole school together, and I think it's super important that we at least keep that tradition. First, just some heartier things that are going on in the school, some more fun things. Student Council is working on some new events, none of which have been officially approved yet, so I'm not going to name them, just in case. Girl Up has started organizing their prom dress drive that they have every year, which will be really great once that is up and running again. 60 Deca students recently attended our local competition, and 20 of them are moving on to the state competition, and four extras who will be competing in the Quiz Bowl, which is kind of Jeopardy-style. And then all of our major sports are doing really great right now, but I want to highlight two in particular, our JV Boys Basketball Team and our varsity Boys Hockey Team are both 11-0 on the season, so they are undefeated, which is a really great accomplishment for both of those teams. Our show fire had their first competition of the season, the Mill City Show Fire Competition, where the electrified group was named grand champions of the competition, so they are off to a great start this season. And then lastly, our 11th grade just had the first civics showcase of the year. So any, half of the 11th grade population speaking, took civics for the first half of the year, and they were roped up into smaller groups and kind of created these ideas on how they can better the community, whether they're on a small scale or a large scale, and they presented their ideas and their findings at the civics showcase last week. And there will be another one at the end of the year, when the other half of the 11th graders take this class for the last half of the year, and I think it's really great to see what these students have been working on these years.
That's better. Thank you for bringing us so much good news. Of course, not a surprise, but it's always good to hear. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to piggyback on a couple of things that Abby mentioned, that civics project that was on the 12th. I had the opportunity to, I don't know if many of you did, I saw Mr. Schoonover there, but you know, I was actually looking at what they're bringing up, you know, like last time they brought the hockey, and I was like, whoa, you know, that's really interesting. And obviously, it changed, and in fact, it's on our agenda today. But some of the things that really caught my attention this year was, once again, they were focused on safety. One group was, they're actually thinking about asking either the district or the town to put a speed bumps near the police station, because when the students come out, they'll, you know, a lot of, I guess the walls are a blind spot and they can actually see. So that one really caught my attention, and it's something that I think the administration should really look into. But I also was going around, and I also noticed a few others, they were looking at, you know, fundraising, either music or sports, or whatever the case may be. You know, the staging, you know, for music parents, you know, they're very wobbly, and they have these new staging that is not as heavy or making still as heavy, but it's easier and it locks better. And another topic that they addressed was food, cafeteria food, which, to no surprise, I think pizza's the favorite food from the survey, but it was really, you know, I wish I had, last time they had it in this room, I think there was only about 12. This time, I don't know what you said, 30?
Almost 30 to 40.
Yeah, there were just so many that, unfortunately, I got there a little later that I didn't get the opportunity to see them all, but it's a civics program, again, just really great to see. And then the other piece that I wanted to piggyback was the 7:45. If I hear one more time from my child that, why aren't we starting school later? It was such a great thing. So I know we've talked about this in the past, where Mr. Pierce once mentioned, you know, starting school, maybe it's still something that we should consider or see if it's possible, because I need to shut that noise at my house. So that's about it, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fenske. Do you have any comments? Thank you. I neglected to thank Coach Bradus at the end of our vote for providing that opportunity for our students today.
Thank you.
You need an extra chap? So much. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we're going to move into public input. We have four folks signed up to speak now. So I'm just going to review sort of our guidelines for public input for everyone. So according to school committee policy, we just asked, should hit the highlights, we asked that speakers just begin your remarks by stating your name and your place of residence or affiliation. We have four or a few speakers, and we do, we have four, so each speaker is allotted five minutes to present their material. So you don't have to worry about if there's more than four. That's basically the rule. We are going to hear from, the committee is going to hear from each of the speakers, we'll take folks in the order in which they signed up, and then we're just going to listen. And then you can see, if you look at the agenda, that following public input will close public input, and then we will, as a committee, take up the discussion. So you probably want to stick around for that as well. So the first person is Benjamin Corville.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Corville.
Benjamin, could I just ask you just to come a little bit closer, so that maybe you can be heard on the?
I'm an eighth grade student at Somerset Middle School, and I've been the water boy for the Raiders for a long time. And Thanksgiving game, I think, is really a good tradition for students and just everyone who comes and watches it for coach, the players. And I just think without a game, like not having, not having that, it's kind of like, it'll be weird for some people not having a game. And I think especially for nine, two years, it's definitely something that would be hard to get used to. And I think that a lot of people would like to have the game, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, Benjamin. Great job. The next speaker is Mr. Don Rubella.
Nick, can I sit there?
Absolutely. Ben's a lot younger than me, so I'm going to westside, westside, wherever you go. First of all, I communicated with you folks regarding this issue a week and a half ago, and I want to thank you for providing this opportunity for public discourse on this issue. It's an issue that's very passionate to me, a couple of reasons. Number one, I have a nephew and a grandson who are Somerset Berkeley high school Raider football players. I also lived the culture of this revered tradition for many, many years, in my 35 years as an educator at Somerset High School, 13 of those years as principal. And I understand how that culture is ingrained deeply within the schools, both schools, Case High School and Somerset High School, as well as both communities. So I'd like to make the following points regarding my feelings on this issue. Number one, I think that if there were problems between these two teams, they should have been discussed openly, there should have been deliberate and dynamic conversation on this issue before any decision was made to eliminate Somerset from competition and to leave us out in the cold without a Thanksgiving Day opponent, which is what happened. My research has indicated the following, and I may be wrong, I'm not saying I'm entirely right, but apparently, this decision was made quite unilaterally, arbitrarily, and within somewhat of a vacuum. Somerset officials, numerous Somerset officials have relayed to me the fact that they were caught by surprise in this. I think there's been a breach of ethics, and I'll tell you why. Case High School has dropped a South Coast Conference opponent and have scheduled a non-South Coast Conference opponent for their Thanksgiving Day football game, again, leaving a South Coast Conference opponent out in the cold. Breach of ethics, in my opinion. And it should be taken up, and I think it will be, intends to be taken up at a South Coast Conference League meeting. I'll mention this as well, you can talk about won-loss records all day long, you can talk about disparities in population and how they may impact one and lost records, but I'll tell you this, there's quality versus quantity. I can give you 100 examples of where smaller schools beat larger schools regularly. Case High School, for example, in volleyball, very successful. So in football, Beaverton High School beat Stockton High School. I'll mention this as well, because I was also a principal at Durfee High School. Durfee High School went through a nearly 16-year drought, being unable to beat Ubedford High School, and it was finally broken. Did they end a revered tradition because they were unsuccessful for a number of years? No, and I'll tell you this, I think it ultimately became a motivating factor. So let me say this in summary. What happened and the way it happened, in my opinion, was clearly wrong. I'm not going to question the ethics of anyone on the other side of the fence, but I will tell you this, discourse and dialogue solves issues, and all stops should be made, should be put out right now to save this revered tradition and to keep it in place. In my opinion, it's not too late. So I say that to the committee, hoping that the committee, and I think I'm singing to the choir anyway, but hoping that the committee will resolve that action should be taken, as much action as possible, to try to save this revered tradition. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubello. The next person to speak is Cara Gru.
Hi, everyone. My name's Cara Gru. I reside in Somerset and my son Sam Gru is a student at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. He's also a football player here. And I wanted to provide a bit of a perspective from the parent's side of this and this decision that was made. So as a parent of Somerset Berkeley football player, I have the advantage to see firsthand the dedication of the players, coaches, the athletic director, and our entire administration to ensure that our program, our football programs top-notch. Our players work hard, they're held accountable, and they persevere under the toughest of circumstances and against some very tough opponents. With the support and expectation of coaches, our football athletes have proven themselves. They put in the work and they succeed. Clearly, they now find themselves facing an unfortunate set of circumstances. The decision by Case High School to find a new opponent for the game was seemingly made in isolation and without including extended discussion with our administration, coaches, and athletic director. Somerset Berkeley and Case have always had a cordial relationship and really the ethical way to proceed would have been to include both parties on the discussion, of course, and to make that decision bilaterally. This should not have been done abruptly as it was, and there should have been discourse before any type of change of this nature was executed or announced. It's really more than a game to our athletes and our students and our community. I went to Somerset High School, I was a cheerleader, I participated in the rally, I was at the game, and now I see my son doing the same. And it's exciting to see how much goes into really that one event. I mean, it's more than a game. It's team preparations at practice, it's the team dinner the night prior, it's the Case rally, it's an entire couple of weeks of preparation and excitement. If the tables were turned and Case players were left with no game and no opponent, I'm 100% sure the folks at Case would feel the same way that we do. A game of this significance and tradition should not be abruptly changed. And really, I feel as though further discussion, collaboration, and consideration should be, should be undertaken here. For those who feel for any reason that the rivalry between Case and Somerset Berkeley should not proceed regardless of the argument as to why, the game really shouldn't be changed, in my opinion, until athletes for both teams have a secured opponent for that day. It's not as though there's an open number of opponents available to us. Every area, city, and town has a matched opponent for Thanksgiving. And this unfortunately was not taken into consideration by, by the Case administration and coaches. The Case athletic director and football coach should understand really more than anyone that student athletes on both sides of the game deserve respect and consideration in the game that they work at and love. I've never seen so much camaraderie then in a, in a football environment. We have team dinners every week. I think more than any team environment, football is a tight knit group. The Somerset Berkeley football athletes should not be denied their Thanksgiving Day game in isolation and as a result of the decision of very few people. So my sincere hope as a parent is that there is reconsideration of this decision, given the overall impact to our athletes. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Bob Fock. No? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? So with that, we'll close public input and we'll move on to the next item of the new business, which is discussion of the Thanksgiving football game. And I'd like to sort of start the conversation by asking our superintendent to give us an overview of the timeline of what's, what's transpired so that everyone understands what exactly has occurred to this point.
And I would just invite Dr. Brelsford, Mr. Francis, Coach Traus. If I misspeak, please just jump right in, okay? All right, so it was a week after the Thanksgiving game, Mr. Francis was notified by Case that they were looking for, that they'd be looking for a new team to play. Following that, I know Dr. Brelsford spoke with the principal at Case, I spoke with the superintendent, just trying to determine whether or not there could be some discussion, reconsideration. I was told by the superintendent then and then in a follow-up discussion just last week or before, that this is something that Case has been considering for a number of years. Based on my conversation, my lengthy conversation with the superintendent, it was clear to me that this was a decision that had already been made, that really wasn't, you know, any room for discussion until a revision, like they made the decision and I'm not going, I'll say that they're making the decision what they think is in the best interest for their students, right? So they're, they're eighth grader groups who are playing up on their high school teams, maybe not varsity, I don't know. They're talking about the size difference between the schools. We still have, we maintain 1,000 students in our school. Their population right now is 533, 540 students. But I agree with what Mr. Rubello said a little while ago, the size of the school doesn't necessarily matter because we've lost this past year to two smaller schools, Old Rochester and upon its wit, both of which are significantly smaller than us. And our team, the likes of Lawrence and Durfee, which are significantly smaller than us. So the size of the school, I don't really think is that major of a factor. But anyway, with those conversations, it was, it was appearing that their decision was, was made. It was my understanding, and maybe it was a poor assumption, I don't know, that there was some type of agreement or understanding that the partnership would not break until we found a new team to play. That was my understanding and again, maybe it was, I misunderstood. Mr. Francis maybe can, or Coach Traus can speak to that in a minute. Following that, Mr. Francis, I know, received a message on January 12th just saying that Case has found a partner and that the Thanksgiving game with us was well regarded. Following that, as I mentioned already, all of us contacted our counterparts over at Case. And again, it was, the decision was, was clearly made that they were breaking the tradition. Since then, I can't speak to who Dr. Brelsford, Mr. Francis, or Coach Traus have talked with, but I did reach out to the MIAA, spoke with Executive Director Bob Alden. He indicates to me that the MIAA does not get involved in these decisions, they don't get involved in scheduling of league matters, so they would not be taking any position I understand that there are a few schools without Thanksgiving Day partners. Mr. Francis has gone through a few different avenues to try to find a new partner. I've also, I spoke with the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Director and he indicates to me that they're like, he's aware of one team in Rhode Island that currently does not have a partner on Thanksgiving, not necess, they might not necessarily be looking for someone to play on Thanksgiving, but besides that, I'm familiar with perhaps two teams, both from the Raider boss name. No one, no one necessarily knows. So those are just really the steps that we've taken, leading us up to here. I can share some of the things that I know Mr. Francis has done and Joe just jump in if you, if you want to, but he indicated that he posted the Thanksgiving Day game opening on the MIAA games wanted site, that's accessible to all Massachusetts high schools. He had the MIAA Football Committee Liaison forwarding an email on behalf to all members of the, of the committee. He sent an email to 105 member schools in the MIAA's districts 7, 8, and 9, which is essentially southern, southeast of Massachusetts, looking for partners. And I don't think any of that has resulted in anything at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Francis?
Nothing.
So that, that's really what's happened over the last six or seven weeks, bringing us up to now.
Let's put you on the spot. Mr. Francis, is there anything you wanted to add or Dr. Brelsford?
You know, it was indicated that this by Case that they were going to be looking for a new opponent. I did say I'd like an opportunity, if that's how you feel, to find a new opponent. From my mind, I think that's something that takes a couple of years because Thanksgiving Day is a very difficult one to find. They have to consider a number of things like obviously geography, the opponent's strength, and it's going to be a challenge. So unfortunately now we're left in a situation where we're trying to find short-term solutions, trying to find an opponent for next year, and then hopefully, as, as time goes on, be able to find some opponent closer to us and we can establish a new tradition that will be challenging.
Then I reiterate, whatever, it's extremely disappointing. I can say for myself the first time that I was involved in a discussion about canceling this partnership, this tradition, was right after Thanksgiving this year. So there was, there was no discussion at my level prior to this year with me pertaining to canceling this tradition since I've been principal. Coach Traus, do you want to add anything?
Yes, actually, I kind of have a unique perspective here. I've been involved in this rivalry for 24 years. I was a Case grad, we played against Somerset and, you know, I've never, we were never concerned ever about, well, they have more kids, there's a school population issue. We just wanted to go out and win, you know, and go out and compete because, you know, these towns are border towns, you know everybody in these towns and it's, you know, it's fun talking about those things afterwards. I bet you probably half the people that show up to those games are former graduates, former players, and they just like to reconnect. And I think it's going to be pretty unfortunate that that's going to go away. You know, I'd also like to say that, I mean, I feel like it's like a little bit of a punishment for our success. We try to build a culture here of hard work, dedication, perseverance, struggling to win sometimes, sometimes you don't win, sometimes you lose. We open our weight rooms eight days a week, I'm talking about three days in a week in the morning, every day after school, a coach or myself is there. My expectations are that the kids are going to work out and the weight room's full every day. And I think whatever, when I tell the kids, it doesn't really matter about offensive, defensive schemes, it's about what you can do in the off-season. If you're bigger, faster, stronger than your opponent, most likely they're going to find success, you know? So certainly disappointed, I mean, even with, you know, being a game that's five minutes away, I can't get out of here till about 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, collecting equipment, doing all the sorting, this and that. I can only imagine trying to take a hike for what could be, let's say, the Grand Boston area to try to come back here and have kids see their families, myself to see my families on Thanksgiving, if it would almost be a possibility. So I, again, I, you heard rumors about things like this, but it was never anything that was put on paper or it was an open discussion. And I hope, I hope there can be some type of reconsideration.
I would just also like to go back to what Abby said before, what we keep, what is still in our control, we will control, the rally will continue, we are going to reimagine it, but we will not be stopping the traditions we have control. So I applaud the students for coming right away and saying, okay, what can we control? We can control this and let's do it. So we will put our heads together and we'll figure out at the very least that. Mr. Rubello, we didn't use our entire 20 minutes, so would you like, would you like to make another comment?
Just want to tell one quick war story. 10 years ago, two individuals who are personal friends of mine were AD and principal of Portsmouth High School. Mike Lunny, who's now the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Interscholastic League, which is the MIAA counterpart, he was the AD. Principal Bob Littlefield, who's now the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Association of School Principals. 10 years ago, principal and AD were approached by Middletown High School. They were 50 years into a traditional Thanksgiving Day football game. Middletown said to them, we're going to phase out this tradition. Those two parties, principals and AD from both schools, and I'm, I'm not suggesting this to disparage anyone because this was orchestrated by the school who was going to drop the tradition, they met three or four meetings, they decided that over a three-year period, the game would be phased out to give all teams an opportunity to find opponents for Thanksgiving Day. They signed a contract between the two schools to settle some of the differences that had been existing over scores, one-loss records, et cetera. After three years, the differences were settled. They are now into about a 62-year tradition in those two schools. Perfect model about the way something like this could have been handled if there was good cooperation and, and discussion and discourse on both sides. I just want to say that. I'll shut up now.
That's okay, thank you, Mr. Rubello. Questions from the committee?
Could I, could I just get a, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, could I just get a sense, just personally again, on the conversations that happened immediately after this Thanksgiving Day? The degree to which you said a couple of times you felt the decision had already been made? There was no, I know that when we, when we first heard about it was at our December meeting as a school committee. Our indication, everybody's understanding is that they wouldn't go out and get somebody else without giving us a ramp up, a chance to find somebody, have that conversation. And so for us, it came as a surprise as well, because we did have a meeting and we heard about it. Did your impressions, and I'll turn to all of you, all of you have consistent impressions at all levels of that organization, that this conversation had happened on their side for some time and they were just letting us know it's a done deal? I'm just wondering to what degree that door might have been opened for something like Mr. Rubello had suggested.
I could only guess that a move like this on their part may have had some talk, discussion with other areas of schools to propose.
So they, because you said it takes two years.
I would think, yeah, I would think it takes a multi-year process. Mr. Rubello gave a potential model a moment ago, in my mind, this takes a lot, this isn't just trying to fill, you know, a game on week two, week three of a football season. This is a very specific day that is incredibly hard to find. And I, I kind of felt like, okay, I made the decision on your end, but to have an opportunity here to find, find someone to play is, unfortunately, we don't have anything to hold them, hold them to, to judge scandalously. We're there in the South Coast Gold Division, we're in the South Coast Blue Division. We played the South Coast Blue Division school once and don't necessarily play a multiple division school by, by essence by once.
And there, did, how was, I'm just, again, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but what was their response to our kind of shock and awe that that was, it was all inside?
I don't want to repeat myself either, I apologize if I do, but... I don't want to repeat myself either, I apologize if I do, but it was just, right from the beginning, talking about the players being so deflated every time they have to play us on Thanksgiving, releasing a recent history because the games are not, have not been very close, with maybe an exception too. So it's just the, the way it was described to me is just that emotional impact, or in sometimes physical impact on their players. And for me, if, like there, if they had decided that this was going to happen, but it was, again, my understanding that Mr. Francis reached out to say, you know, to have this maybe understanding that, you know, let's, let's hold off until we can find a partner ourselves. So although I knew that this would be coming to an end, we thought we had maybe a few years for that to happen, just so that we could find a new playing partner on Thanksgiving Day. But again, that's maybe that, maybe I misinterpreted, you know, what was communicated to me. I don't know, I don't know. That was generally your understanding as well.
Have they given any indication that anyone to sit down and talk, you know, open kind of, not open necessarily, but school committees or administration, open to discussion? Do you have any questions or comments? Question to, when you were approached, told, was that something you asked at the table? Did you sit down and kind of try to work it out? Or it was just like, this is happening?
It almost felt like, I know where you work in high school, but it felt like a high school breakaway.
It's exactly what I said to the coach in May, when I spoke to him after Thanksgiving. It was like, you know, ending a relationship, you know, with a, you know.
And it seems maybe they already had an opponent in place when they...
There were rumors that there were opponents, that there was an opponent that they were going to play. That opponent somehow fell through.
But they have somebody else.
And then, and then I think Atlanta's charter, again, I can't, there's nothing written down, but certainly, I don't think anything's been written down here, as far as an email, hey, reach out, this is what we're doing. Nothing's written down, so as far as I'm concerned, it seemed like the rumor was pretty legitimate that they had an opponent already and that kind of fell through after Thanksgiving.
First conversation I had right after Thanksgiving with that other school was that they were looking, they were just looking. And there was no reason to comment, anything like that at that point. The second conversation I had was that it was Atlanta's charter and they were moving on and it was, that was it. I said, is there any, any discussion we had, it's done. So that's, those are the two conversations.
Yeah. You talked about how when they differ the gold and the blue, could potentially the SCC schedule us to play Case on a different day?
As presently structured in the SCC, we would play Case, I think, in a couple of years, if I'm wrong, cycling around. If that's as presently structured, the crossover between blue and gold in football is likely to be eliminated by the conference this year. So like, for example, we play Fairhaver this year, which was a great game. That was a gold division crossover game. That was, that was within the conference, yes, but did it count towards the South Coast Conference standings? No.
And then if we go to the SCC, you, we can basically, Mr. Schoonover, is, do they have any, is there anything that they can do? Or is it Case gets to make the decision, what's unilateral, and we just have to figure something else out?
There's nothing in our, in the SCC bylaws that says they have to play us next year. There's a principal AD's meeting this week, or we'll just bring up the subject of what is happening.
Any other question?
I have many comments.
I'll let you go last.
All right.
Mr. Machado?
All right, well, this morning at 4:40, I received a phone call regarding this issue. 4:40, and this is a former Swansea individual. I think this, this fight is a fight that's over, in my opinion, though that I appreciate our speakers, especially Mr. Bell, because he and I served on a school committee early on, and I'm friends with him, I can honestly say, you know, we're friends. So when he called me up on this, I knew as a, as a former principal, a grandfather of a student, he was not going to be happy about the situation, nor would anyone. I did find out in November 29th that there was the discussion of, that they were looking for an opponent, and that was an email that Mr. Schoonover had sent to us. And that same day, I actually bumped into Mr. Freitas at a week, and we had a quick discussion on this. I don't believe any decision was made by the way that Mr. Schoonover sent me the email that he received, and also the way I spoke to Mr. Freitas. It didn't seem like anything was completed. I also have heard that there was going to be this, you know, handshake of type agreement that no one would jump into another, and I'll use a high school term, another date for the prom until both, both members had an opponent. Mr. Schoonover mentioned saying that January 12th was the date that he found out. I actually read it in the newspaper earlier. Did you mean December 12th or?
No, it was, that was the day that, I believe that was the day Mr. Francis received the text from his counterpart at Case saying that they found a partner in late this year.
All right, so that kind of upset me more because we read it in Herald News that they were already partnering up with one of the charter schools. Being on this committee for 17 years, not this one, but as an elected official, nine times I received a letter from Case High School with a ticket for the Thanksgiving game. And I'm sure you probably received it this year. So for nine out of the 17 years, or maybe eight out of the 17 years, I received a ticket. What I'm wondering is why our school committee did not have that discussion with their school committee. I personally would like to know how many discussions actually happened, even in the Swansea School Committee of this topic, because I think this is a topic as a sitting school committee member, that if our team was planning on doing this, I hate to say this, I would want to have all the coaches, I would have Mr. Francis here to tell me why they're moving. I, I just don't understand how a school committee wouldn't want to know. And the reason why I'm saying that is because 12, 13 years ago, in 2009, so do the math, in 2009, 14 years ago, I actually had a discussion with Ms. Fattato, who was the chairman of the school committee back then at Swansea, asking them, because the hot topic at Somerset and Berkeley was regionalization. And I was not a fan, as everyone knows, about the regionalization with just Berkeley. I wanted, if we're going to regionalize, let's make it a tri-region. And the very first thing that came out of Ms. Fattato's mouth was, God rest her soul, was, who are we going to play on Thanksgiving? And that to me was, as a school committee member and as a Fall Riverite who got, who Mr. Schoonover and I witnessed many defeats against New Bedford, I was like, as a representative of education, are you telling me a football game's more important than the education system of our children? I was really upset. At that time, I was also the chairman of the school committee, and I used to meet with Bill Meehan at Cuppers every two weeks. God rest his soul, I'm outliving everyone. But the very first thing that came out of his mouth is, who are we going to play for Thanksgiving? And that's when I finally learned that that game actually means something, not only to the parents, the students, but also even our elected officials who make the decision. As I mentioned, I served with Mr. Bell, but during my tenure with Mr. Bell, I also served with Ms. White, who was the assistant superintendent. So this morning, I picked up the phone and I spoke to her. In her eyes, and I have no doubt in my opinion about Ms. White because another friend of mine, and I trust her, and her main thing was, as Mr. Schoonover said, it wasn't so much the loss or being 2-18 in the last 20 years, it was more of the physical harm of their students. I also remember as a school committee member, I'm one of the members who voted to eliminate the football program at the middle school because our eighth, seventh, and eighth grade students were playing against freshmen from other high schools. And I thought it was a safety issue back then. So if that was the reason why they were deciding to remove here, again, I think it would have been something that they would want the coaches to speak together, collaborate, and actually work out a plan, or either a three-year agreement, two-year agreement, or whatever the case may be. I personally, not as a born Somerset resident, but a transplant who's been going to these games every year, at least the majority, ever since I've been on the school committee, I love this tradition part. I love seeing over 120 motorcycles coming in from both towns, and what they're doing is they're raising money for some type of charity in, in Case. So that is always something that I always thought was great. I hate to say this, I think our administration is correct. It is too late. I really feel it's too late. I think the damage is done. I think we really need to aggressively look for another partner. I know there is, one school that was mentioned is Bishop Hendrix or from Rhode Island. They may be looking for a partner. I don't know if that's the permanent solution, but we should probably reach out to them if we're even in the same caliber. But I've seen our team play, and I've seen our team play outstanding teams, and they come out a winner, or they put on a good fight. But I definitely think we need to do something. I really also think we need to write a letter to our counterparts across the town line because we have a lot of co-op programs with Swansea. And I'm concerned if they were to do something like this to our football team, what will they do to the other co-ops that we have with them? I think our school, I think their school committee probably will read and listen to the radio, I mean, the TV stations now, but I think a letter should come from us saying, you know what, we owe it to our children to sit down like compassionate or just professionally speak to each other before we make these decisions that affect not adults, but students. That is the part that, you know, that committee has to understand that we're here about the students, you know. I understand Mr. Bell and the parents are upset, but there is students involved that is the one that I'm really caring about, you know. I really think we need to have that letter sent out, and it has to be a strong letter. To a letter that we, and just for those that came here today, I urge you to go to the next school committee meeting and ask to be put on their agenda because they're the ones that made that decision, not us. And even though that school committee doesn't have jurisdiction, they superintendent, they all report to them. And like I said, if this was a decision that we were turned around and I was finding out that this tradition was broken and Mr. Schoonover never once brought it to our attention at an open meeting, I would be very, very upset. And the other thing that I would like to know is, I would love to know, and I think Mr. Freitas already, Francis already mentioned it, that the email on the 29th says, per our phone conversation, and it seems like that phone conversation was probably within that timeframe, because, so if that was the first time you're hearing it, that's kind of disappointing. And again, I'm going to have to use Mr. Bell's words, almost unethical to say, you know, we're done. So I am probably not the most politically correct, but for our students in the co-op programs, I'm really concerned because I just don't trust that, since the coach is the athletic director, he may get another better deal in a couple of weeks and just decide, you know, that, we don't need your hockey players or the tennis players or whatever co-op programs, gymnastics if we're even with any of the other co-op programs. But that's where I'm concerned, is more, what are the decisions that they're going to make that's out of our control that will affect our students? And so I'll be more than happy to sit down with anyone to co-write a letter with, and sign it, but I think some type of action from us, even though it's non-binding, but if they want to continue to be a partner with us, they have to make sure that they live to our standards of how we would want our students to be treated, because I think not, not having a date to the prom is unacceptable. That's just my opinion.
Sounds like we have a beginning of a motion. I think maybe before you make that, I'll just add, I just wanted to sort of echo and verify that I think there are obviously some things that were, that are still up in the air in this whole situation. I think a couple of things that are clear to us, first of all, is that the efforts of our administration, superintendent, athletic director, principal, and head coach throughout this have been in our students' best interest, and have been as proactive as they could be under the circumstances. So I want to thank them for their efforts in trying to, you know, salvage this situation. We, we know that from the MIAA and through the conference that we don't have an official recourse, whether it's as a committee or as an administration, that you can be served with divorce papers, I guess, and there's not much you can do about it. But we can certainly express our, you know, our opinions on that. This transpired officially in terms of the announcement of a new opponent, transpired after our last meeting prior to this. And this chair, I thought that it was important that this discussion include the entire community. So it's just so that we're here, we want to thank everyone for their showing up and for their public input. We know that this is something that people feel very strongly about, and so do we, sort of unilateral action, but certainly if the community wishes, we can certainly compose a letter to our counterparts in Swansea. And I also know that Dr. Breszcz and Mr. Francis will be attending an AD principal's meeting next week. I'm sure that they're prepared to do whatever in their power to express our, our position and our opinion. I think the other thing that we can say clearly is that we have an opportunity here that I think we all, everyone in this meeting feels disappointed and frustrated. And we don't know how this is going to turn out. I have a personal experience in the school that I work at. A very similar breakup happened, and we were without an opponent for two years. It was very difficult for students, parents, alumni, probably almost in that order, because it is such a, such a longstanding tradition for some of the folks. It ended up with a resolution, but I don't want to underscore that. I know Mr. Francis has been and will continue to work very hard. It is not an easy task because it is quite, if we can't come to, if we can't convince our friends at Case to reconsider, he's got a task in front of him, he knows it, and I just, I want to make that clear so that our expectations are reasonable for this community. That said, I have every faith that the folks involved will do their very best to ensure that at a minimum, our students have... that at a minimum, our students have, and if we have to start a new tradition, we start a new tradition led by the students. And I have every confidence that the folks involved will do that with our students' best interest at heart always. And I think we have, unfortunately in life, right, we have these situations, they happen to us through no fault of our own, out of our control, and disappointing for sure, and I think we have an opportunity here, and I think the folks who've spoken today demonstrate this, that we have an opportunity to model for our kids that even when we have these adversities and these obstacles, what we can control is how we respond. And that's sort of all we can do at this point, and we can, you know, call upon folks goodwill. And I, like Mr. Schoonover, I assume good intentions for folks. I think no one in the education business is trying to hurt kids in any school, right? I think people always act in what they believe is in the best interest of their students. We have a difference in opinion, and, you know, we can, as a committee, do what we can to address that. But I know the administration, regardless of what anyone else does, will work with our students to ensure that our students have a great experience and that this is one of those opportunities to sort of show you how we overcome adversity and how we behave when things don't go away because unfortunately, it's not the first, nor will it be the last time. And unfortunately, our students have had quite a bit of practice with that, with the past few years, right? Sort of twists and turns and losses of events, so it's a lesson they've already learned a few times. It's unfortunate that it appears that they're going to have to sort of experience that again, but I want to thank everyone involved for the class and the advocacy that they've demonstrated on behalf of our students. And if there's a motion to compose a letter to our counterparts at Case, I would enter to the map, I'd be willing to craft that with a quote from our athletic director superintendent and a member of the committee.
So vote.
Motion and a second, a letter from our committee to the Swansea boardroom, all those in favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you, everyone, for, you are welcome to stay for the entire meeting. I know if you don't have homework or dinner or anything else better to do, we'll take a quick little, just like a two-minute break so that folks can... Yes, do you want more?
Do we have the option?
So the next item on the agenda is the proposed changes to the graduation electives requirement. Dr. Bresford.
So I shared the slides with all of you pertaining to graduation requirements. So Abby actually gave me a great segue into this prior to our first conversation, when she was talking about the pathways and how she really wished she had more help with scheduling herself for the four years that she was here. We felt that as well, so one thing that she probably doesn't know, she's a senior, so she's not really going to participate in the process this year, is this year our guidance department is going to meet face-to-face with every single student over the next two weeks, starting next week, down here in the library, face-to-face to discuss their schedule for next year, what they want to take, and then to have like a conversation about, okay, where are you going, where do you see yourself, and how are you going to get there? And something that I feel very passionately about and, you know, the philosophy that I'm trying to convey moving forward to our staff and certainly students is that students are not one-size-fits-all. Everyone's going in a different way, in a different path, and I think our graduation requirements need to adjust to conform to that thought process, that everyone has their own path through Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. And my philosophy for the purpose of high school is to get you ready for the next phase of your life, is to get you ready for college, career, military, just life in general, which is where our vision of the graduate came from. So to that end, my proposal that I'm looking for your acceptance for tonight is to change our graduation requirements. So to start off with, nothing's changing about the requirements in terms of credits. So everybody that's here right now, nothing's changed about the amount of credits that you need to graduate, including the classes coming in. The only change that we are proposing for next year is instead of expecting every single student to have the exact same elective experience, meaning every student at Somerset Berkeley right now must pass a fine performing arts elective, they must pass two engineering tech electives. So that really kind of pigeonholes everybody into specific schedule of classes. You know, one of you was talking to me prior, you know, during our break about how when their child started at Somerset Berkeley, we had a conversation about what do I do? And my explanation to everybody was always, well, get the electives that you have to take out of the way. So the junior and senior year, you can take what you want. That's always been our bad prime. But I don't want it to just be junior and senior year, we want them to set up their pathway all four years. So the proposal is that instead of those five, those specific electives, every student has to take the required English, social studies, math, science, phys ed, health and civics requirements that we have to take because those are state mandates, they are allowed instead to take thirty elective credits. And we can change this next year, we can change this across the board because whether or not you were involved in our graduation requirements from before, it's still thirty credits of elective, so it doesn't matter, but now you get to, for lack of a better way of explaining it, choose your adventure. And it's not that you couldn't follow the old graduation requirements, if you're a student starting at Somerset Berkeley and you don't know, you know, where your path is going to lead you, you have no idea what I want to do when I graduate, okay, well then you should start the liberal arts pathway, take a little bit of everything and figure out where you want to go. But we do have students that enter the halls freshman year who say, I am going to medical school and I'm going to major in this and I'm going to become this kind of doctor, and that is, and they do succeed to that. That student should be on a different pathway, can be taking different electives than a student who comes in and says, I'm interested in music and I want to follow a path in music or a path in sports management. And I don't, I think that we're cycling students by not allowing them the opportunities that they want, not the opportunities that, you know, maybe we all had in high school, the mandates we had in high school, or a little bit of everything because every student is not the same. So that is my proposal, and that is, you know, we have, we've kind of just rolled out the scheduling options for students. Students have already started looking at our program of studies, choosing classes, but we didn't roll this out yet because I know I was coming here tonight. So if everyone is in agreement on this tonight, tomorrow we will start to explain this a little more to the students. And again, it's not a major change because no matter what they were doing, they can still do it, or they might make a different decision because now I'm a senior and, you know, I didn't take my fine performing arts, and I had no interest in taking my fine performing arts, I really want to be a doctor, so now I can take an additional science class if it's in my schedule instead of that. So that's...
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Comment?
No more questions?
Love it. I support a thousand percent. I think that's exactly what it is, we kind of always like this, the way we've always done it, and so...
Which is my least favorite answer to any question.
Mine too.
When anybody says why we do it, if that's the answer, it's not the answer.
Exactly, it's not the answer. Right. So I think it's fantastic, I think the kids, they knew what was coming, I mean, senior and a freshman, they both do, and we would send an email, I think, to get ready, we're going to start talking about it, you're going to meet, everything you just told us about.
Mr. Schoonover, I've also been in a lot of civics project conversations, and we've talked about this with a couple of different groups. So yeah, we have kind of put it out there hypothetically speaking, this might be...
So when I was talking to my son, he was like, you know, we were kind of saying, what does next year look like for you, having a discussion, and we got to electives, and I asked my senior, does he have to do, what does he have to do? And so they're both like, wait, that might change. And he's like, well, that will dictate what I choose, you know, I don't want to have to do whatever or not, say, if it's not something he's interested in. So I think it's very well received. I think it's about time.
It's also going to allow us to get to advanced coursework. Prior to this, we usually cannot offer those classes because we have so many classes of intro to whatever, because the students have to take those intro classes. Now, yes, we won't have as many sections of those, but now, you know, when a student can focus in art or in music or in whatever the case may be, they will be able to take that advanced coursework, and we will get to those capsule projects in all the different disciplines, which are starting.
Any other comments, any questions?
Just a couple of quick questions. So every student's going to have a one-on-one with their guidance counselor. How do you, like, how long will they be with that guidance counselor? Like, I'm just trying to think logistically how, because I think we only have X amount of guidance counselors in most of our students.
So the goal is to get through class by class, so we need to create the entire schedule where every class has a day and a period that they're coming to the library, the teacher will bring the class down here, and it'll just be one after the next, after the next, with the hope that they get through all of their meetings within that class period, and then the next one will come down. So, you know, guidance is in itself shutting down for two weeks while we do this, and our school just counselors and certainly, you know, us as administrators will try to triage that while they're doing that. But that is, that's the plan. We've already given that to the teachers, so the teachers know this is when my class is going, and that's the intention.
And the other question, obviously, one of the things that we've been promoting, especially Julie, Jeff, and all that, a lot of the college credit classes, you know, getting college credits. When do you have that discussion with those students? Because I'm always still amazed, and some students don't know about it, and I'm like, how do you not know about this, you know?
Different teachers have those discussions, guidance counselors should be having those discussions, and I know the next conversation's about Blue Radio Block, starting next week on, in Blue Radio Block, so we're pushing into freshman classes to start discussing these topics in Blue Radio Block, their freshman year, so that they start to think about this as a new format, so we're going to introduce them to, you know, the pathway of college and career preparation, what do you want to do, take career interest surveys, things like that, so...
Very good. If there's a couple of years for one quick second, I love our high school administration for bringing this to us, it's basically not the, like, oh, this is the way it's always been done. I do like that you're actually looking at this and bringing it to us, so I agree, I love it.
Mr. Francis?
I just have one question hypothetically. I say, I'm coming here as a freshman, and I love music, I want to go on this musical path, and I get to junior year and say, geez, I don't like music as much, is that part of it? Are the options still there to change paths?
Well, certainly, I mean, like, that's the beauty of it, is choose your own adventure. So you get two years into music and you say, well, now, and it's not just, I also don't think it's all just about college career, this is what I want to do. You may be on the path to medical school, but maybe you want to take a photography class because that sounds kind of cool, and it's a lifelong skill that you might, you can still do that. So no one is saying, it's not like a major in college where I'm going to major in this and there's nothing else I'm going to do. You can do whatever you want to do. I think the question that the guidance counselors will ask is just the simple, well, why do you want to do that? And if it's because I really just have an interest in, okay. And we'll still only have, I mean, we only have so many teachers, we only have so many seconds, so we still, we'll be limited in what, you know, kids, students may not get into their first choice, they'll still have to take, you know, different options, pick different options in case they don't get their first choice.
I, it's a great idea. As a mother of a daughter who had to take engineering just because she needed it to graduate, I'm sure she would have remembered if she would want to take it. And I think it's also beneficial to the kids who want to be engineering that want to learn because they don't have those kids that don't really want to be there.
Which, not in the daughter's case certainly, but in some cases can cause discipline problems, cause failing grades because they have no interest in it, so they have no desire to do it. Who's that good for? So that's, it's going to help in a lot of areas, I think, and, you know, we all know that when students have an interest in a new one class, they're coming to school, their attendance is better, the discipline's down, and when they have motivation, reason to be there, they can get through some of the other classes because of that passion.
I want to say, I think the rationale is perfectly sound and the timing makes sense. It's a great approach for all the reasons. The only thing, I just noticed, looking at the slides provided, and this will be a conversation down the road, but I just want to put it out there that I'd like to have the conversation down the road is the three-year math requirement. So, and I know that that's, so I think, you know, this is like a great first step, and it's also that it can be implemented without really affecting staffing and without affecting graduation requirements, and then larger scale sort of core requirements would require normal days and probably staffing and the whole sort of other thing. Recognizing that, but I do, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look, but it is in our strategic plan, a couple of the points are, one is to ensure that students meet math score, and math score requires four years of mathematics, include an admission to Massachusetts State College and Universities, requires that you have math in your senior year. And so, and we want more kids to do calculus, and so we're going to be able to get to calculus, right, as well. So for all those reasons, and that's not something we need to talk about for a little time, but just looking at that, it brings that up for me, and so hoping that once this and all gets straightened out, one of the next sort of things that you bring before us would be a proposal to, I think the other ones are pretty much on track, but that's the one that stands out to me, that is sort of where we could, the other thing I would take is I think it would also improve our student profile in terms of college admissions, right? Because it's more rigorous, you know, it sort of raises the, you know, you're showing that, so it could also have a, those students have probably already taken four years of math, right? They're already meeting math score now, but it also just sort of raises the profile in that benefit students across the board. So boom, that's a going forward on it, this is what this proposal goes. Also, I...
Can I just piggyback off that? Because I had the same thinking of you, and I was just wondering what kind of communication have you, your administration have discussed about someday mandatory, the four years of math? I'm assuming you have talked about this among yourselves, and I'm just wondering why it hasn't been brought into this document yet? Because that's one of the things that kind of caught me off guard, but I didn't want to say anything right away because I figured there is a plan. I'm just wondering what your thinking was behind that.
So we had discussions, we need addition of staff, particularly special ed staff, because we only have co-talk math classes freshman and sophomore year, we don't, we have to junior and senior with co-talk classes, so we need to kind of look at that model. I think our plan for next year and subsequent years of removing the college prep level and increasing the rigor across the board will naturally lead to that fourth year becoming mandatory.
So it's definitely a...
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the strategic plan, I think it's part of the long-term plan, we just, I think we have to get there nine through twelve, eight through twelve, seven through twelve, we all have to work together.
I just wanted to add, so yes, in addition to, we've identified that as a need for us, we've been talking about that for a number of years, just increasing our graduation standards, with the two areas that we're falling short right now from last quarter, the fourth year of math and the two-year requirement for oral language. But I really wanted to just comment on the kids' perspective, the students' perspective. Mrs. Gagliardi and I talked about this with the student advisory committee at the beginning of this month. I wanted to mention to them, get their feedback and input, and all the seniors who are there, oh, where is this? And we had the comments like, I only took graphics engineering because I had to, I only took robotics, so I didn't want to take robotics, so I took TD production, and, you know, all these things, like, I never would have done that, I didn't want to take an honor of music class, but I had to take this. And like, kids were saying, I want to go, I want to be a doctor, I want to go into medicine. I want to go, I, I want to be a doctor, I want to go into medicine, I would have loved to have doubled up in sciences along the way, or took more math courses, but I couldn't because I had to do these other things. And I think it was unanimous from all of the kids, just that they were in favor of these changes, and also, when, when I mentioned the, how the scheduling was going to be, and all the seniors were, oh, where, where was that? Because they, they really liked the idea of coming in, having that, that one-on-one meeting, and the scheduling is really getting, they're having the counseling with the scheduling, and creating the scheduling for the requests at the same time. And just in our prior life, we did this in, in my former district, and the number of conflicts, scheduling conflicts, almost went away, because you had that collaboration right there between the guidance counselor, school counselor, and the student, and tended to eliminate any of those other scenarios where someone might not have taken all the courses they wanted, or, or choosing something that really didn't, wasn't the right fit, or whatever. So, it ended up being far more efficient as well. But anyway, of course, I'm both part of Mrs. Gagliardi, I'm, I'm not.
No, no, I, I, they were very enthusiastic about it, and, you know, talked about these similar scenarios where they would be able to do so much. Yeah, they were, it, I will say that it was great to try to mention, appreciate the work that we did, and the work that all of them did. It was a great conversation. They were very insightful.
All right, so, there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion to approve changing the graduation requirement to 30 elective credits, determined by student choice, rather than mandatory electors.
Support.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Support. The next item on the agenda is Blue Raider Block update, and Mr. Bass, you had asked that we, who was you? Maybe just ask, we need a little update on how it's going.
Yes, for so much.
Respect your elders, please.
I was separate, I can't do the same thing, but I didn't, just that. No, I, I think I asked the question about that because there was some, some discussion when you made the change to the Raider Block, right, and how beneficial that was coming to the community.
We have gotten, to be honest, we've got mixed feedback on that. We are potentially looking at switching it to a different day of the week next year. We probably would have made our recommendation this year, except that I really felt strongly that our senior class should not live through four years at Somerset Berkeley with four different scandals. I really felt that a little bit of consistency before those students in particular was in order, because they, you know, they, they got hit hard too with the, you know, the world of COVID. So, our scheduling committee has never died, they, they're constantly meeting, we have some students that are meeting with them as well, they're going to be making some suggested changes in the next few weeks that are actually going to be voted on by the faculty. Nothing, nothing major, so it literally would be from one day to the other, I believe the day is Wednesday that they're looking at. Much like I, you know, Mr. Machado is probably sitting there, you know, I told him so, because I remember sitting in his exact seat. But, there's a lot, you know, Blue Raider Blocks are work in progress, we need more time in it, and in finding the time in the schedule for more time, 30 minutes is not enough time, is something that we are also looking at. But we do have some really awesome opportunities, specifically for our juniors and seniors going on, enrichment classes, for students that are academically eligible to junior in their senior year, they're going to be signing up this week for their third term, and, you know, some of the opportunities they have are fitness center, cardio club with Mr. Almeida, AP language practice, so additional AP, English language practice with Mr. Chase, line dancing with Ms. Burns, and Officer Lewandowski, the SRO at our middle school, is going to come over and offer a law enforcement procedure course, where he's going to do a different topic every week. I think that is going to, we call it sell-out, it's going to sell out with, it's like tickets. Inclusive PE, where we're bringing special education students and regular education students together to do some physical education activities, community service, Seremos is infamous for that project. So, there's, there's a lot of enrichment activities that are going on, there's a lot of extra help that's going on, particularly, I'm sure, and maybe you have kids know, this has been a tough season for illness, so there's been a lot of, you know, sick absences from school, and that's where the students are making up work mid-years right now. But again, that 30 minutes, it's like a crunched amount of time, so you can only do so much with that 30 minutes, and I really think, you know, it's, it's key to, to somehow figuring out, and that's what I've challenged the scheduling committee to do, is how can we embed this with more time across the board, so they're looking at that right now. I mentioned before, our guidance department, starting next Friday, will be pushing in and meeting with fresh, the groups of freshmen to start discussing college and career opportunities at Somerset Berkeley and beyond. So, there's a lot of great things happening. You know, it's a work in progress.
Any other questions? Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, basically, I know there was some discussion about it, and I was really concerned about if you're, that plan is being used to give extra services to students, because the work is in the back of the business.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the superintendent's formative review.
Thank you, I shared, well, Robyn shared with you two information of students that, so, the document that you have, it actually contains goals for what Somerset Public Service and Somerset Berkeley. So, I'll just give a very high-level overview of just some of the things that have been happening pertaining to the goals for Somerset Berkeley. Some goals are shared between the two, and, like, there's one on Hurley College, which only contains Somerset Berkeley. This is, like, really the, the first year where we've done a two-year evaluation cycle, so, it's really for calendar years, '22 and '23, and here we are at the midpoint, so it's just a formative check-in, and then the summer of evaluation will take place at the end of 2020 calendar year, we discussed this with our faculty. For those of you who are new to the evaluation process, there are three areas where I have to choose goals in, there has to be at least one in each of the three areas, professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. So, here, for this year, pertaining to Somerset Berkeley, there's one professional practice, two student learning, and a district improvement, so. The professional practice, this, this, it exists for both school districts, but it's really focusing on our leadership team learning logs, and I really wanted to, to do this because on the heels of COVID, we really got away from doing a lot of things, like, we were just deliberate and, and really not doing a lot of things together for tools, for fear that we would wipe out an entire administration, or, or district administration in, in doing some things, and, so I really wanted to get that back on track this year. So, we've already had three learning walks, north, south, and the middle school. We actually have Chase tomorrow morning, and then we're going to have the high school sometime in February. So, what this involves is really all the principals, some of the assistant principals, some of the content coordinators, district leadership, and we, we all go to a school together, the principal breaks us up into some smaller teams, the principal picks a few goals that he or she wants us to focus on, with Dr. Ross Irving in February, she'll, she'll say, I really want the team to look at these focus elements of the team. Focus elements are things that we determined at the beginning of the school year, along with all of our content coordinators, our leadership retreat. So, we go in, we gather, each team will, might visit six or seven classrooms, we all collect this data, we come back, share our observations, our insights, share the data with each other, adhere to the principal, and then the principal will inform, or our staff, you know, just the highlights, you know, focusing on the strengths, but also identifying the use of things that need to be addressed or worked on, improved, whatever. So, anyway, that's really what the focus is, that, again, back in August, when we identified those focus elements, we also, for each one of those, looked, like, created a, a loop force list, so when we do go into a classroom, what are, if, if we focus on one, on an element regarding student engagement for instruction, what should a teacher be doing if a student, for a classroom that has high student engagement? What should students be doing? What, what does it look like if it's in a highly engaged class? So, we created this list, we all turned that into it, and we compiled one for each one of those focus elements, and that's what's guiding our work, and we're finding people based on that. The second, my second goal, the first student learning goal, is increasing achievement of students with disabilities. This is, this has been a growing concern of mine over the past few years, and again, this is in both, both districts. We just, even before the pandemic, we saw that the discrepancy between students with disabilities, the achievement primarily based on head gaps, but student achievement, the gap is growing between students with disabilities and all students. So, we focused, we, we brought in an outside group, who's solutions K-12, they, I think we've highlighted at some meetings in the past, they spent a few days with us in the fall, they met with all, all interested parties, teachers, fire professionals, administrators, parents, they go to our classrooms, and they will be giving us a report on their findings within the next few weeks. So, once we complete, once we receive that report, we'll be creating an action plan, and really focusing on some of their recommendations, if you like, to help increase the achievement of our students and students. In addition to that, we've had this ongoing professional development for our co-teaching model, I think it was just last month when we missed that? Did it make, was that last month? In a special ed, you are, I think so, right? So, she, she spoke about the professional goal, but that's been ongoing, and, and we've had some, some really good feedback, and, and we're seeing the success of that happen. Let's see, the second student learning goal is expanding that local college learning opportunities, or, or to mention the grant that we received with Bristol Community College. This year, we continue to expand our Project Lead Away coursework, and that is also something where students can earn some college credit, like an AP class, at, at some schools. My goal, I've been working with someone at Bristol Community College, seeing if they can create an articulation agreement with us to award credit for students in Project Lead Away courses. The Massachusetts Bay Community College does have an articulation agreement with schools in its cashman area. Unfortunately, we didn't qualify for it, I, I tried, but we're, we're not close enough to them, but I could share that agreement with Bristol Community College, hoping that they can just maybe take that and, and maybe expand that to schools around here for Bristol. So, we continue to do work in that area. And then the last one, just, again, it was for both districts, facility upgrades and maintenance. This is, we're, we're in our ninth year, apparently, this is, the school is still in, as far as, sort of excellent condition. We had a big music festival here a few weeks ago, and I had a few administrator friends came as parents on that day, principals and superintendents, and I received messages that weekend just saying how beautiful this school is, how well-kept it is, they're amazed that the school is not years old, and is not showing where and care that their families might show in less time than that. But, with that said, the building is not even old, and we need to start looking at, we already have a capital improvement plan that we developed a few years ago, but we will revisit that, and making sure that we are addressing all of the potential needs, making sure that we have not just maintenance schedules laid out, but big financial items, so that we can project the budgets properly. Mr. Caro has mentioned, you just tonight, about the, well, maybe we don't say the budget something, the previous meeting, about some of the operations that take place on our, our field of the planning that we're doing. So, that was really the other, just making sure that we are doing everything that we can to maintain, preserve, and all the systems here that we explore. And those are the, the four goals that I identified. I know it's just a quick update, there really isn't evidence for you to review at this point, that comes in, the summative component, next December, January.
Does anyone have any questions? Thanks very much. Okay. The next item under unfinished business is student user fees. So, let me see if I can recap. An ongoing conversation, we'll see if we can just tie it up for now. So, for the current fiscal year, we had in-place athletic user fees, consistent with how they've been for the past many years, with $150 for the first sport, $100 for the second sport, and the family cap of $500. Third sport, no charge for the third sport, family cap $500, that's athletics. Built into this budget was a, a show choir user fee that had, you know, four of them, and there was also a charge for the first activity, and then the second, so the gold show choir, the gold ensemble, we get charged twice. So, the budget subcommittee has been working to try to make that more equitable in, in the middle of the budget. So, we met today, and we wanted to make a recommendation to this committee that athletic fees remain untouched for this budget, we're already into two seasons, and that our recommendation for the show choir budget would be for this, this year alone, for athletic group, that we, those, show choir fees would be set at $150, flat, no fee, no distinction between the gold group, just $150 per student, with a family cap of $300. The rationale for that was essentially, we sort of looked at, look, you had two students, and it, you know, it would mirror the, the similar family cap that sort of placed that up. So, we're trying to give some relief to our show choir families that have been paying a lot, not very much, for a period of time, making the fees sort of consistent with athletics. And that, that would be the recommendation for this year. And I would, I want to say that we are having already. And I want to say that we are having already ongoing conversations in the room about it, such a thing, about addressing this going forward. I think based on all the conversations and other meetings, I think everybody's goal would be ideally no user fees. Unless, that's at this end, right? That's ideal. But is there a way to at least minimize them and ensure that they're accurate and ensure that they're clear and consistent? So we also talked about making sure that going forward, that although they're included in the budget, and so a vote on the budget is in assets, a vote on the fees, that we make that clear upfront. So it's everyone's fair. So that was one change, sort of procedure that we like to recommend and hold ourselves accountable to. And, and that we have, we have a commitment to ensuring that student user fees are as minimal as we can make them while balancing out also the need to be able to provide programs. So there's sort of that, the cost of running, the cost of running programs, but also, you know, we want families to bear as little of that as possible, you know? And, you know, we want to be able to also expand programs. So that's the balancing act, but it's one that we're taking very seriously. Mr. Taro will be reporting out to the community once we get to the budget subcommittee. We've already been doing some work on some scenarios and try to forecast impacts on the budget with different user fees. So we must reassure folks that we are, we are working on, recommended to, Mr. Venter made the point, and it's a group on several occasions, that it is not something that we want to go forward to piecemeal because we, it's, it's complicated. And if we do it bit by bit, there's some unforced errors and some unintended consequences. And we want to do our best to ensure in a thoughtful way, in a way that is pragmatic, thoughtful, and fair. So we are endeavoring to do that. This semester, we were experiencing a lot of things.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the real thing is you, despite, like, you're in show choir, you're in dress group. But I think the committee is committed to finding out what we can do to release impacts. So maybe there's going to be something, first of all, this being challenged is getting all the fees identified. Because there's a lot of other things, like, got the ski club. All comes out of the students' pocket, I should, I don't know that, I'm not doing that shit either, but making sure we can identify all the things and be a confident, hence we're doing it to, it's fair to everyone. And maybe we can't afford all the adjustments in the first year, but we can, we take the time, put together programs, and say, okay, we can do it over three years, get it down to a no or low usage. That was kind of my thought. I don't think we're going to give it one shot, especially when we're on budget, as we're doing like that. So, but, you know, fix for this, rather than me to do the other things and feel like crossing over this. We're just committed to holding the budget at the table until December if we have to. But it's difficult to do that at the same time we're developing budget. So it's really good ideas to do this as a kind of address the big issue on the table. We're committed to bettering our response on the user fees.
No, I'm, I think it sets a good standard for this year, to kind of put a little bit of things on the parents for this year, and then we can look at it over and over to in the future. And I think, even just sort of those talks from the public community, I just lost ideas being on the table. So even like, a one-time, a student user fee that maybe isn't specific, right? Athletics, it's just a flat fee. Whatever your first activity is, that's the flat fee. And it all goes into one revolving account, so that's also something we're exploring. It might make a lot of sense. But for this year, if the committee entertains this proposal, it would result in some of the show choir families would be getting a refund, that some of them have already paid and have sort of stopped collecting as we were working through this. So for the folks who haven't contributed yet, they know exactly what the amount is of course, or if this is adopted, who will pay for the immediate issue that will refund. Well, I'm going to put it in the form of a motion, then we're going to, if there's discussion on it, so I can make it clear. So I would entertain a motion that student user fees for show choir for fiscal year 23, be set at $150 per student with a cap of $300 per family. So, motion, wait a second, on discussion.
I, first of all, a couple of meetings ago, I said, you know, I'm supporting zero. I knew that was not possible. I just, but I did want to force this conversation, which I'm glad it did happen. I actually went to the Tottenham website, and I do believe, and I think I shared this with Mr. Schoonover, maybe he shared it with you. I think they only have a one-time $150 fee regardless of what you do type of thing. That is something, I am against all user fees, public knowledge, everybody knows that. The phase approach that you are discussing, reasonable. I definitely think it's extremely reasonable. But the only thing that I'm a little concerned about the motion, it puts not athletics at home. It definitely doesn't put music at home. But what I don't like about it is there a title, music, there's still a title of sports. It's a user activity, in my opinion, and I'm now going to advocate for the sports parents. Why does a sports parent have a $500 max, but a music parent has a $300 max? So, and, so to me, what I would like to entertain, and obviously this is something that I've been thinking about. I knew the zero wasn't going to happen. What I would like to see, and I know it might be an administrative nightmare because you're getting funds from different amount of people, but with the structure that you have right now, the maximum for a family could still be $800. That's still, to me, way too much money. What I would rather see is the $100, $150 for the first activity, $100 for this year. Next year, I'll be promoting more of the $150, let's do that for a couple of years, because it's a tough budget season. Everyone knows that. What I would like to see more is, it's $150 for the first activity, $100 for the second activity, regardless of the sports, music, whatever the case may be, with a max of $500. That, to me, is the fair way to move forward this year because we're treating all activities the same. Next year, we need to really look into a little bit further. And I'm glad that you're mentioning that you are, because all of our clubs, regardless if it's the ski club, DECA, all of these clubs have a cost associated with them. Some of the clubs actually are more expensive than some of our sports. And I think you, we need to look into that. And I'm not looking at it as, hey, this sport, you know, oh, this activity's $150, this activity's $250, or hockey's $800, or whatever the case, I'm not looking at that. Because to me, the straight gay alliance club and DECA and the ski club and music, they're all equally as important to me, regardless of which one you are, and I think we all agree on that. Because there's a value for it. What I would prefer seeing is no caps of 300 or 500. It should be uniform, because we do have a lot of parents still, and I think, you know, I know probably Ms. Field in the past, probably Mr. Schoonover, maybe some of the people on the board, where you have a music child who also plays a sport, who also might be in DECA, maybe even, it might even affect Julie as well. But I think we need to make it uniform for all, regardless if it's a nightmare, and that I don't care. If it's a nightmare administrative, sorry, done, empty, I'm Iran, empty. But to me, I would prefer us to say $150, $100, regardless of what activity you're doing for the remaining of this year. Next year, I would ask you to look to see what, $150 only, regardless of what activity? Sports, music, clubs, or whatever? Let's do that for a few years, and then at some point get to the goal of zero. We're not at the point to get to the goal of zero. You're hearing that from a guy who wants zero, but realistically, that would be my recommendation. Is let's no longer put the title music and athletics and just put student activity, regardless of where that money is going. Because, I hate to say this, we don't have, in our budget, and maybe I'm wrong, we have the student activities, we have, you know, all of these things, but I don't think I've ever seen the budget lines certain that, like the ski club, this. Do we even have that on our budget? Where all the stipends are broken out, we have, there's a general line item that has student fees. I mean, stipends and stuff like that, right?
They've embedded into the budget as far as the total dollar.
Yeah, and I know what the breakdown is, based on, based on the contract. You know, on the contract, right, like that. But what I'm saying is, let's just, in our budget world, let's just make it a user fee and not an athletic fee or a music fee or a club fee. That's my only recommendation, and I hope, like I said, I, zero is not an option. I hate to say that. Maybe five years, three years, may be an option. But this is better than what it is, but we still have parents who are paying $800, up to $800. And now, if I have three kids who play sports, I may be able, I may be paying $450 if they only played one season. But if I have three kids who are in the music program, I'm only paying $300. There's, now we're, now we just went the other way. Now we're taking, so I would rather see us $500 max for the activity as a whole. That would be my only recommendation. Everything else that you said I can agree with, it's just that now we're doing it the opposite way. So I would like to make a standard for everyone.
Any other comments on this session?
I have some questions. So I totally agree, it's very fair. How is, are we making it equitable if we have show choir at 300, sports at 500? Is because then we have two opportunities? Okay, that's just one, I tried to clear that.
Okay.
But do you, if I could just jump on her question, is it really only two activities? Is it sports an activity? Don't we have students who are doing multiple music and sports? That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. To respond to your point, we sort of, we kind of thought about this as well. I'll give my perspective is that I agree with you that a $500 cap across the board would be, I, would be better. My, I would recommend that we implement that with the FY 24, whatever, in conjunction with whatever fees sort of schedule changes we arrive at for FY 24. And the reason for it is this. I, 800 is high, I acknowledge that. I think that, two things, one is, if we changed nothing, it was, it's still better than it was, right? So it's progress, it's progress in the right direction. We also do, we have a budget built right now where the athletic user fees goes with the athletic revolving account. And show choir, we're definitely, and, and I, I have no problem making life difficult, Mr. Taro sometimes is. But I do think that that, implementing it now would have, it has an impact on the budget because it has an impact on the revenue. But it also, I think it would be, in the middle of budget season, we're just going to be realistic. He's got two budgets he's working on, the kid aid at the high school. I think to disentangle that at this point, I think is, frankly, I do think it's too big an act. What I would say, though, with families would be that, as always, we should put this more into reiterating, that if there are families for whom these fees, whatever they are, if the cost is prohibitive or is too burdensome, that we would, we hope and encourage and want them to contact high school administration, I think is the appropriate starting point. And, and to reach out, we could, you know, in cases of hardship, we can address that. Families should not hesitate to avail themselves of that option. So I agree with you, I just can't support doing that now because I think that it, frankly, to just put it blunt, it's going to mess up the books for FY 23 in a way that is, and we're probably talking about handful of families where there's like a full show choir environment and multiple athletics and multiple kids. And I, and I think, for those families, if it's, if it's burdensome, I think the easier, cleaner solution is to, if there's a hardship, waive it. I think issuing refunds and sorting out multiple revolving accounts is, is too confusing. So I, I agree with you, I just think that that's an FY 24 solution. I think we're making progress, we know, we all know we're not there yet. But I think it's a step in the right direction. I would hope it gives those show choir families some immediate relief, and I hope confidence going forward that we're committed to reducing fees while maintaining, actually hopefully expanding opportunities for kids at the same time. I, I still support it in this front, so I very much hear you.
And one other, the only other comment that I have is, as I mentioned to you about being at the civics program, one of the groups was about fundraising for the music department, you know, how they're concerned. Our committee, I mean, our students, the show choir, they, as Abby mentioned, they won the grand champion because of, in their level. But one of their concerns to me, and everybody knows that my daughter's in that show choir, was, did you see, was that the one that has?
Vibe, Do You Know Me?
Is it Shuckin Hill?
Oh, Shuckin Hill.
It's one of the, I don't remember what school it was, Hanson, I don't really remember. They had these humongous sets and stuff like that. And they were like, we have very basic items, we don't have a pip band and things like that. And their concern is, are they going to be treated in our budget for FY 20? And moving forward, that they also have a budget where they can still get the sets? Because their concern now, yeah, mom and dad might be saving $350 each, or $250 each child, but that money isn't going to make our program, with, you know, I think the word was net that they used, I don't remember what it was. But, and I, and I said, well, we would be treating, again, everyone equally. We wouldn't have a football team not have the correct materials for them to play the sports and stuff like that. We, so, so I encourage all of our advisors, regardless if it's sports or music or whatever the case may be, to be meeting with the administration to make sure that their budget is what they need and not worry about ticket sales and things like that, because the budget is the budget, so. And we're, and we're done.
And I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Taro, but I think from our conversations, that those conversations are happening, and I think especially Mr. Young, I think there's a new approach to show choir, like, and it goes across the board, right? So looking at that, and exactly that.
Thank you. One last thing.
Yes.
Thank you all for the public's knowledge. I think you guys did a great job. I'm voting no, only for one reason and one reason only. We currently have no user fee for music technically, and this is implementing something. And I can't implement something that goes against my, if we had a 500 officially, my, if we had a five hundred officially and we were going down to one fifty, I'd be supporting it. I'm just voting no because it's zero to one fifty. That is the only reason. I think the work that you guys did and that the approach that you brought was in fact realistic for this year's budget. So I don't want the public to think that I don't appreciate, I think everything, even you said the nightmare, the budget, the eight hundred dollars and all of that stuff, but what you said also, if there's any family that cannot afford, please contact the administration because we don't want to see students, uh, and it's confidential. No one will ever know. Uh, we just, we don't want students to lose out on their high school experience. So.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Any, no other discussion? We'll take a vote? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Oh, I, I have no faith in you, especially, you know, this defense. I mean, no faith, no, no, I apologize. I have no faith in any of you. No, I have all the faith in you, uh, especially knowing this defense maker, knowing what you guys talked about, you know, it's just, I know you guys are looking at every dime and I'm glad that we're all on the same page. We don't care how much work it means to Ron. That's what I'm here for.
I was thinking about the past years. And when I was in high school, they said, you should go with numbers. You should be a county, I went to, what county?
Okay, moving along. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the discussion on eliminating student parking fees beyond twenty two, twenty three this year. This is fairly self-explanatory about what happens when we look back at the minute. We realize that when we took the vote to eliminate the student parking fees based on the wonderful and persuasive and well-researched, uh, student presentation, civics presentation, uh, the vote technically was only for, uh, this fiscal year. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to eliminate all student parking fees permanently.
So vote.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
I can talk about this during your financial committee for next year, the budget committee? Okay.
Well, it's already out of this year, so you can have.
We just.
We just, okay.
All those in favor? I'm opposed. Next on the agenda is the twenty one, twenty two end of year surplus distributions to member communities. I don't know how much of a recap we need on this. We, does anyone need a recap? Can I go with a motion? For the calculation, how was that?
Step seven.
Oh, all right. Pull that up. And, uh, you can fill me in.
So Mr. Taro was, uh, in contact and wanted to explain like sort of the recommendation, I think, was not actually from D O R, it was from DESI on sort of the, um, the calculations.
Yes, yes, in fact, you know one of the.
I do.
Uh, the recommendation was really try to state true form as far as the assessment calculation sheet, going back and forth, but it's something to talk about this term of that, um, using step seven and determine the percentage allocation, uh, reimburse or refund back to the member communities. That would be the best approach. It could get a little bit tricky with, with, we talk about out of district tuition, how the form would work. So if she felt that would probably be the cleanest and best way, also spoke to our auditors, uh, we recommended a similar approach. So it was consistent with their recommendation. And I think it's going forward. If you have any other issues and you're adopting this, you already have a model in place and know what to look for instead of trying to figure it out, try to plan, um, the, so that, that would be the recommendation as a percentage by member communities and then you take that percentage and allocate it to, to the.
To the overage.
The overage, the, the, the excess over the cert of the maximum amount allowed under the E and D.
Right. So you just take step seven, whatever that breakdown is on that total.
Get a percentage and then apply it.
That's great.
That makes sense. Any of the offset credits?
Yes, yeah.
Way before we talk about out of district.
Yep.
On that line, absolutely.
And one of the things we wanted to really caution, that's why the DESI involved is to make sure, because what we do is instead of present this out of the beginning, this one, the gap, this, this, there's a value.
And is this going to be an outright, um, reduction in what is the remainder paid this year? Or will it be in a check? Will it be a credit towards next year's assessment?
It, it would, it'd have to be addressed this year. So we actually owe the money now.
Okay.
So we, uh, my thought is to really take it as an offset credit to the next payment.
To the next payment. Okay, got it.
The notification would go through Lindsay and all of these, the notification that they were reducing him based on this percentage and his dollar amount, and I would share the percentage calculations with them.
That makes sense.
Quick question. So that would be a reduction, a reduction of the payment from the town to us, correct?
That's correct.
Now, we're in the red because we didn't get the cable advisory credit or whatever that case. How, how are we working that situation?
So that was another conversation I had with, with all of the members and, uh, all the groups that I spoke to, DESI, D O R, the auditors. In an essence, it's, you're kind of cherry picking stuff out of the budget and they don't recommend that. That's why we went right to the chapter, I'm sorry, to step seven as it relates to if we had a deficit, then the recommendation will go back to that member community. By the way, you short this money, you would have to collect that money, then recalculate. So the benefit of doing it this way now is that we have a surplus. If we had a surplus this year, then it would be relevant. The next year, that eighty thousand, four hundred dollars is out of, out of the FY twenty four budget. Instead of cherry picking each one, it's difficult to say, okay, well, out of district tuition could be in a shop. And then, then you start getting into hashing this out and they highly recommend staying away from that.
And the number, the, the percentage that we're doing, is that based on the year's surplus number or the current number of students?
So it's, it's based on the FY twenty three assessment sheet. I'm sorry, FY twenty two assessment sheet, based on the way the budget was established.
Okay.
And then you take the surplus and apply it to that percentage. So you use the same fiscal year with the same surplus sheet.
Good question.
And I think I'm correcting, I'm wrong, that the person at DESI who recommended this approach is also the same person who helped us with the regional agreement. So it's someone who's very familiar with our.
Ms. Lynch?
Right. Christine or Michelle? Michelle.
Yes.
So familiar with sort of listen if that seemed to be sound enough. Okay, so then I will, this is a long one. I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the budget subcommittee to return the FY twenty two budget surplus to the member communities according to the recommendation by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as follows. Using the certified amount of seven hundred and eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, seven eight seven nine oh four, and based on step seven of the total operating assessment, refund five hundred seventy two thousand, one hundred and forty three to Somerset, five seven one four three, which, which represents seventy two point sixty two percent of the surplus and to refund two hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty one to Berkeley, two one five seven six one, which represents twenty seven point thirty eight percent of the surplus. The refunds will be treated as offset credits on the next monthly assessments for each town.
So vote.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Still voted. Next, up we have December twenty two financial statement. Mr. Taro.
Sure. Um, if you had an opportunity to look at this, uh, we're running favorable as I, as I, excuse me, as I mentioned at the last school committee, we do have some excess money coming in through circuit break, but that's helping us to offset some operating costs, uh, in addition to some savings in the special ed, out of district transportation. Um, we did purchase and we rent and we use some of that savings for the out of district transportation to purchase that vehicle. Uh, there will be following this financial report will be a request to do a budget transfer and it will adjust those various pluses and minuses within those accounts. And, um, again, we're tracking favorable for the end of this year. So we're looking at trying to address some things that we can address now to the amount including the FY twenty four budget request and stay ahead of things. Uh, whether it be some capital improvements next week, uh, as we talk about the budget subcommittee, we'll, we'll, we have a meeting, uh, Thursday with Mr. Francis, Mr. Alex and I are looking at, uh, start to dress, figure out how we can plan to address the drainage issue in the vehicle field. Uh, if we need to kind of get it done to get that in a week. So that's one of the things we're looking at to use some of this money. We have some money left open, the bond proceed to cover it when we use that up. So we want to get those projects underway and, uh, get it addressed once and for all.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Will that affect the season?
Yes.
So have you thought about where it even goes?
That's, that's what, that's what I mean Thursday to talk about if the field, if we can get it done now in plant park, then where the students play, we've got the middle school construction project, we don't worry about the middle school team. I actually had a conversation with the softball coach, uh, she's actually a teacher in one of the elementary schools. And, uh, so we've got to kind of figure out how we work the logistics and that's probably the part Thursday before you, you'll put the specs up and repeat this.
Okay, so related but unrelated?
Sure.
Um, I'm also the president, co-president of the Little Eak in town.
Okay.
And so we have CPA funds to cut Pottersville to make it with smaller kids to play.
Okay.
So I spoke to Battery and the Red Department, um, and we said we would hold off on that. We won't cut the field until after the summer. So that way Pottersville is still a sixty ninety field and you can use that for the middle school, JV freshman, whatever. So you can do, I don't know if you've gone to yet, but you have that as an option that we will.
And that's welcome to Mr. Taro.
We'll vacate Pottersville to accommodate the school's need and we won't cut it for the smaller kids until the summer, to, to the seasonal order.
Perfect.
You're welcome.
What's made the board decide?
Any questions on the December financials?
Okay, last on the budget and financial, the budget transfers for twenty two, twenty three, the document over, dated January fifteenth, from Mr. Taro.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers, um, that are shown in the document that is dated as of January fifteenth, twenty twenty three. And if we could also add this document to our permanent records of the minute, um, for such transfers.
Second.
Motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those, voted. Thank you, Mr. Taro. Uh, moving on, other matters informational, um, OPEB subcommittee update. Yeah, so the OPEB subcommittee met recently, uh, with it and had a presentation by our actuary of form, Nihart. You all have any folder that report?
Although I've heard that presentation twice, I cannot go through that presentation yet, but I'll, I'll call your attention to a couple of pages and just give you really high level. On page three, uh, on the executive summary, you know, essentially our, um, our position with respect to the OPEB liability has improved for a number of reasons. One is a change in the discount rate and two, uh, two is, uh, a change in the, uh, the cost, the anticipated cost that's evaluated and projected here, the estimated cost. And then three, I think it's because we also added more money into the account.
Yeah, the addition is not on there, but it's footnote. So the additional contribution may didn't hit the bottom line that you're seeing on page three, but it will be reported in the next report.
But it did increase a little bit even without counting the three hundred fifty thousand.
Yes, yes, correct.
Um, so, um, all in all, I thought it was a great meeting. Um, the report I thought was pretty comprehensive. We had, I think, some great discussion back and forth between members of the trust and the Nihart, um, representatives that explained that to us. Um, essentially their comments are we are making progress in the right direction by making additional contributions. They, they mentioned that not all their clients have done so. So, um, that's good to note. We, um, there are different ways that we can continue to improve our position and we'll be working with them and also our, our auditors to try and figure that, figure that out. Um, on a different note, so if there are no questions on that, I don't even know if I could answer that if I had any, but, um, all in all, I think we're in the right, we're moving in the right direction in that. Um, we are scheduled, we have scheduled another meeting in May that we will invite the school committee to. We'll be doing a joint meeting where we hope to have representatives from MasCrim, which are, is our new investment group, talk about what their philosophy is, what their, um, their performance has been since they received our funds. Um, there, our funds were transferred from Rockland Trust to them on December fourteenth. It was a successful launch and, uh, they did report, although there's not a lot of information, I think they said eight point two percent in the third quarter return. So pretty good so far. We'll, we'll get a better picture when we have that joint meeting, but we thought it would be important for the school committee as a whole to get that. Any questions?
May, do you know the data or?
I do have the data.
Can you just share?
It's the state of the school committee meeting that we already asked.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They'll come to the beginning of our meeting.
Excellent.
So it'll be joint because it will be the, the full OPEB trust committee as well. Would that highlight, is that okay?
Do I know is eight point two percent?
Yeah, good. There you go. Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, the next item on the agenda was the strategic planning subcommittee report, which we are going to postpone.
Right.
Okay, until, uh, our next meeting in February. Um, and then topics not anticipated by the chair. I don't have, I don't anticipate everything. Um, next, the Somerset and Berkeley Public School updates. Mr. Shata?
Very quick for us. Uh, at our last meeting, um, we also discussed the superintendent's formative evaluation of mid-year checks. Um, we released all the executive sessions like we've done in the past. Um, we continued to speak a little bit about the timeline for our budget. Um, uh, the school committee was very gracious to change their, school committee scheduled to, uh, make it a little easier on the building committee because we're needing a lot more, as you know. Uh, the middle school project, we gave a quick update just for you. As you can see, the project is moving and it's moving quickly. So, um, and I just wanna, I, I mentioned it on the meeting, um, it's many, many meetings and I can tell you, uh, our superintendent attends a good majority of them along sometimes with Ron and, uh, Dr. Kamara. So it's great to see the administration has the finger on the pulse. It's not just, you know, I'll attend whenever and obviously you know how much work it is, Mr. Defense Maker. Um, and let's see, we accepted some donations from the Feinstein organization to two elementary. I think it was about, uh, ten thousand five hundred or something like that. And that was really it that I captured. I don't know if there was anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Shata. Was this all updates for Berkeley?
I don't have much for Berkeley. Our last meeting was mostly our budget presentations. So we started that process, um, and our MSBA projects that we're moving along with for our community school repairs, I'm hoping to do, we've chosen the designer and that was approved by the MSBA. So we're in the, moving along in the feasibility phase in that study and it seems like it takes forever. We're moving right along, so feasibility is where we're at. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, next item is action items for future meetings. Anything that we haven't already addressed this evening that folks want to? Okay, next item is action items for future meetings, anything that we haven't already addressed this evening that folks want to? All right. And then next, we have consent agenda, so we'll break this into two parts, we have donations, part one, and then approval minutes for part two. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out of here?
I'm sure. I need to abstain from the Friends of Music's donation, as, as in, of Friends of Music.
Okay, so pull that out. All right, anything else? All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the following donations for the marching band Hawaii trip. Bay Coast Bank, three thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars. Senator Michael Rodriguez, one thousand two hundred dollars. Representative Patricia Haddad, two thousand dollars. TVI Inc., Savers, five hundred and eighty five dollars and forty cents. Somerset Berkeley Education Foundation Grant, four thousand dollars.
So vote?
Second. Motion and a second. I'm going to pull that out.
Oh, sorry.
Any other discussion? Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, so voted. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the following donation for the marching band Hawaii trip, Somerset Friends of Music, six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
So vote, second?
Motion and second, all those in favor? Aye. No opposed, one abstain. Okay, and now I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of prior meetings. Open session of December twentieth, twenty twenty two, joint open session of December twentieth, twenty twenty two, joint executive session of December twentieth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Okay, one second.
Oh.
Is it possible to have the band come and express their experience in Hawaii? Because I, I think, I would love to hear how that time was, especially if they were able to meet any of the veterans that may have been there, that'd be great.
Agenda item for future.
Thank you. I would love to.
I'd love to hear about it, great idea.
Thank you.
We get to go.
Or we can go skiing, that's a good thing. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted.